Okay. We call to order the WPCA, Norwalk WPCA meeting of Monday, July 19th. It is 5:41 PM. Item number two. Can we save executive session to the end, or do we need to do that now?
I'm gonna make a motion to move it to the end.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. McNary, all in favor? Let's see. Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee, McNary, Clark. Is that a hand? Yes.
It's moved.
Moved, okay. Thank you. Item number three. approval of the meeting minutes help on January 21st and special meeting on July 7th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Still moved.
I, Mr. Bovee, any comments, corrections? Additions, deletions? I just saw a few typos. Item number seven on page three of the regular minutes. Approved sewer permit. Stewart sewers, misspelled. Couple of the minor typos. Not worth mentioning. Anybody else? No? Daleen, you got that?
I got it.
Thank you. Thank you. Nothing else? All in favor of approving both meeting minutes? Aye?
Aye.
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 Okay. Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee, McNary, Clark. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Keegan, you're still called Taranites. Okay, that's unanimous. Item number four. Act on sewer appeal for 120 Newtown Avenue. Is there a motion to approve that?
Still moved.
Okay, Mr. McNary, is there any comments from staff?
Mr. Chairman, other than this, I believe this has been before, you have word in the past for discussion. But 120 Newtown, the staff has no objections. The parcel is currently served with their existing septic system, and they are not connected to city sanitary sewer. Therefore, the staff has no objection to recommending that the bill sewer fee be waived and that WPCA approve three years of on their tax bill, which is the 2019, 2018, and 2017 general ledger. And the total adjustment is $1,079. And the draft calculation sheet is enclosed.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. At issue is the time. The... Is the motion is for three years, Mr. McNary? Or Mr. Keegan?
I made the motion. Yes.
You made the motion? Was your motion for, it doesn't say on the agenda here. Was your motion for a three-year adjustment?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody understand the difference? The time?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Staff recommends that we approve a three-year
Adjustment.
Give back adjustment to the homeowner versus, and what is it? Is it seven years that he's been paying a sewer fee to the city and not having any benefit from it?
Yes, six, seven.
Yes, it is seven.
Okay. Are we discussing that issue now, or?
Well, we discussed it quite a bit.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We can, we can make this, see if this motion passes. If it doesn't, you can make an alternative motion.
Okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
I am.
Yeah.
Okay. The motion is for a three-year adjustment, not a six-year adjustment, which is apparently legal, but not preferred or recommended. Being fully transparent as much as we can, the board has discussed this quite a bit. Let's call a question. All in favor of a three-year adjustment for 120 Newtown Avenue? Aye?
Aye.
Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee.
Clark.
McNary and Clark. And, Mr. Keegan, are you a nay?
I am a nay, thank you.
Okay, so the, the motion does carry. One opposed, Mr. Keegan. All other in favor? Thank you. Okay, so, item number five is, has been pulled from the agenda. I don't think we have to formally table it. So...
I'll make a motion to table number five to the next meeting.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee, McNary, Keegan, Clark. Thank you, that's unanimous. Item number six. Is there a motion to schedule a public hearing on September 20th, 2021 at 5:30? For proposed sanitary sewer extensions. A, 174-176 Bowton. B, 238 West Rocks Road. So that's two sewer extensions. For September 20th, is there a motion to schedule the public hearing?
Still moved.
I, Mr. Bovee, is there any discussion from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board. So just to give you a bit of context, I'm not sure if the applicant's attorney is present. I don't think that Attorney Sutchie is. Okay, so we can give you the executive summary. So, item 6A, the 174 to 176 Bowton Street is a proposed five-lot subdivision. This includes the extension of the existing sanitary sewer on Bowton Street, plus or minus, give or take, 100 linear feet. There is currently, the plan is to extend from the existing dead end or last manhole, or first manhole, I should say, on the street, put 100 feet of pipe in, and then put a new dead end or end manhole. There will be several sanitary sewer lateral stubs that are going to be required to be installed from the main to behind the curb line in accordance with our new policy. This, this proposed sewer extension would also potentially benefit two existing homes, meaning that these two homes on Bowton Street are currently served by septic system, and they will have the opportunity to connect into the existing sanitary sewer main if they so choose. Again, this is 100 linear feet of eight-inch PVC pipe. The eight-inch sanitary sewer main is the minimum state standard, both in New York and Connecticut and several of the states. So that's why it's eight. And again, they're just extending it from an existing dead end manhole. They call it the first manhole on the line. They're putting a new, new, a new section of piping with a new dead end manhole. And again, sanitary sewer stubs, and it would be in accordance with the new policy. Item B, if I can take both of them together, Mr. Chairman, to answer any of the questions. 238 West Rocks Road is a prior, previously approved sanitary sewer extension from 2015 that basically lay dormant for a few years. Staff has been working with the applicant on both of these projects, A and B. But 238 West Rocks Road was previously approved by DPW and WPCA staff. Bowton Street is currently under review by staff. It was never previously approved. So, item 6A is a new application. Item 6B has been around for a long time and basically resurrected. Staff is currently reviewing both projects. But just for background, West Rocks Road is the Greek Orthodox Church. They do have a prior approval, but both these applications are subject to new policy, which includes the board having to schedule a public hearing to discuss the application and if amenable, schedule a public hearing. 238 West Rocks Road, that will benefit, so that portion of sanitary sewer, I believe, is several, several hundred feet long. Maybe 200, 300 feet long, taller.
About, yeah.
And will benefit 12 existing homes. Again, there'll be sanitary sewer laterals and stubs provided along the sanitary sewer main for the potential future connection of those 12 homes. I believe it's several hundred feet, eight-inch pipe. Both projects will have hydraulic monitoring or flow monitoring to see what the existing flows are in the immediate downstream vicinity of our sanitary sewer main, so that if any means need to be increased as a result of the additional flow from either one of these projects, that hydraulic flow monitoring will tell us so, and we will make the applicant do so accordingly. We have currently no objections to either application. And like I said, West Rocks Road and Bowton Street are currently with staff under review. I believe that on both applications, they're in the process of addressing DPW comments over.
Yeah, with, with the West Rocks Road, they are, they are addressing the comments from DPW. 174 and 176 Bowton Street is currently under review by DPW staff.
So, Mr. Chairman, well, they're both, they're both under review.
Right. What I meant is, Bowton Street submitted revised drawings, which DPW is currently reviewing.
Right.
For approval.
And West Rocks Road was previously approved by staff, but also the new plans are under review.
There was revised drawings for the West Rocks Road, which we supplied comments to, and the applicant is working on those comments to address our concerns. And we are pending the revised drawings to be submitted.
So, overall, Mr. Chairman, the, the staff does not have any objections to the currently proposed plans. Both under review by staff, but I just want to give you background for West Rocks Road. This was, this was on the books for quite a while, and the applicant has shown a renewed interest.
Thank you. Both of these are subject to our recently adopted policy. Even though it was approved before, the policy was put in place, it hasn't been built. So this is going to be subject to our new policy. Right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Does anybody else have any questions on this? Any, either one of these applications? Okay. All in favor of scheduling a public hearing? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee. Clark, McNary. Where did Mr. Keegan go? There he is. Mr. Keegan? Mr. Keegan? Mr. Keegan? He's muted. Okay, that's an aye. I saw him raise his hand. That's, we'll call that unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to note too, Attorney Sutchie is on the line and does have a hand raised if there are any questions from the board to the applicant's attorney. If there's no questions and, and we're set to set the public hearing, then I just wanted the record to show that Attorney Sutchie is on the line and available for you with the board with any questions.
Thanks for telling us. I don't see him. I don't know if anybody else can see him. Does any other member of the board have any questions for one of the applicant's attorneys?
No.
Hearing none. We'll move forward. Item number seven. Authorize the transfer of balances in the following amounts from set aside accounts from fiscal year 2020-21 to 21-22. Is there a motion to approve the transfer of balances?
Moved.
Mr. McNary gets it. Any comments from staff?
Well, Mr. Chairman, just briefly on each item. The Green Mountain project involves our sanitary sewer lining and also manhole rehabilitation. This is an ongoing capital project, and the requested funds are needed for carryover between fiscal years and to continue employing the work. The Suez funding includes the June operation services invoice with an amount to be determined as long, along with the additional out of scope items that were previously approved, and we are still waiting a bill from Suez. So we don't have the final amount yet, but again, this is, this is money to carryover in our, in the the fiscal year 2020-21 to fiscal year 21-22. For the same purpose, so there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no different appropriation for the money. It'll be the same purpose as they were held up here.
Yeah, this, this seems to be, by memory, this seems to be something that you folks do at the end of every year. And there's been some discussion about whether you could do that with an operating versus a capital account, but apparently it's on up and up. It's standard operating procedure for us here. So, any questions from staff on the transfer? Any questions on Mr. Carr's explanation of the issue at hand? No? All in favor of the transfer?
Aye. Aye.
Taranites, Austin Fine, Bovee. Clark, McNary, and Keegan. That's unanimous. Thank you. Item number eight, contract reports.
All right, Mr. Marston, you're up.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, well, I'll talk a little bit about June. It was actually a pretty quiet month. Our team was able to get about two miles of sewer cleaning done, 2.3 miles of TV inspection, and about 3.7 miles of SL rat work done. They also did the hotspot jetting, which accounted for about four miles of, of extra work they did during the month. The centrifuge installation continues. The contractors have remobilized as of today. They've received several of the materials they've been waiting for. We're still waiting for some fiberglass conduit for the scrubber. And also, believe it or not, doors, the longest lead time. Two large swing open doors that won't be here till the first or second week of August. But progress continues. IP and P inspections continued during the month. We had 60 inspections. We also continued to receive septicage from Stanford, and we continue to operate at our level-two COVID plant. So June was pretty quiet, but that led into a very exciting July, so I thought I'd give everyone a quick update. We hadn't activated the 002 outfall since late 2019, and as a result, we really weren't able to fully test it or get a chance to run it. But we had that opportunity in early July. So we had two events. The first one occurred on July 3rd. We had a significant rain event that resulted in the activation of the 002 discharge for approximately five hours, where we discharged a total of 290,000 gallons over that period of time. We did, we did take some good notes. We were able to track the performance of the system, and it allowed us to prepare for what was to be a much bigger rain event the following Friday. On Friday, the 9th, between Friday afternoon and the end of the day, July 10th, over that 36-hour period, we received 6.49 inches of rain total in Norwalk, which according to Ralph is officially a 25-year storm event for the Norwalk area, which is pretty, pretty substantial, certainly more than, than we'd ever experienced. And Ralph said it was more than his tenure at the facility. So that, that amount of rain, you know, you, you all live in Norwalk, you experienced, most of you experienced it yourself. It was a substantial event that came in a number of very concentrated bursts, which are a worst-case scenario for us here at the plant. By about 7:20 on the morning of the 9th, we had exceeded the 30 MGD threshold, and we activated the storm, storm outflow for the next 22 hours. We, we ran both the 002 and 001 discharges. And then that ceased on the, just about the morning of the 10th. Total flow over that time, we did 11 million gallons through the 002 outfall, and we did 20, almost 28 million gallons through the regular outfall. So over the 24-hour period or so, we discharged about 38 million gallons through the facility. And we, peak flow was about nine o'clock on the morning of the 10th. We had in excess of 65 MGD going through the plant. We had all six of the influent pumps running at 100% speed, and every single pump station pump operating at 100% speed. So it was quite a load test of the system. I was happy to see that the, all of the equipment performed well. All of the pumps maintained pumping throughout the event. We had no pump station failures, and we had no equipment failures of pumping systems here at the plant. The big challenge we did experience is we washed an enormous amount of grit out of the collection system and inundated our headworks. So for the last week plus, we have been working close to 16, 17 hours a day with subcontractors, isolating and cleaning out all of the influent channels, all the bar screens, working our way through the wet wells and grit tanks over the next two to three weeks ahead. So we've got a lot of work in front of us. The plant is stable. It is, it is in compliance. We were in compliance throughout the entire event. But we do have some work in front of us over the next few weeks. I guess another, just another event, the, the Ann Street siphon was activated for approximately an hour and 20 minutes on the morning of the, of the 10th. Were unable to gauge how much flow went out of that siphon, but it was only for a short period of time. And all these events were reported to DEP, Bureau of Aquaculture, and the Norwalk Department of Health as they were occurring. So that's kind of an update. I don't know if anyone has any questions or any observations they saw during the storm. Just a lot of water.
There's a lot. You hear all the calls I've received about people could not control the water coming into their basements. It's unbelievable.
Yeah. There were, there were, there were areas of Bowton Street that were two, three feet deep of, of water in the street.
Yeah.
Was, you know, at that point, you're not sure if it's going in or out, right? But our team did great. DPW was awesome. You know, considering the magnitude of it, it was, I took a ride around after the storm. The sun actually came out that afternoon, and it, you know, from driving around, it almost looked like nothing had happened because everything drained right into the pipes, so our teams did a great work, did a great job.
John, I, I wanted to say the same thing too. I wanted to thank WPCA staff. I know DPW operations and especially the Suez staff. I know that, I was on the phone with Ralph quite a bit, and even, even post, post-incident response. I know you and, and your, your team were working, especially trying to get the, the bar screens, all three bar screens back in order, aside from the aeration tanks and all those things going on. You know, those bars, those bar screens are important because that's your first line of defense, right? The headworks building that stops all the rags and, and other interesting things that come through the sanitary sewer that could basically make a pump setup life expectancy shorten very quickly and, and definitely be a detriment to your operation. So I, I know that not only during the storm, you were monitoring everything, and you're right, all the pump stations were online. I think only one pump station was on generator. That was the Woodward Station that was on generator briefly. And I was looking at some of the flows on Skater too. I mean, I saw 1,400 GPMs, 2,000 GPMs. I mean, I saw all of them on, you're right, all six pumps that the headworks building were on. So, you know, a lot of people don't realize, but they also know now, because I did reach out to the mayor's office, the common council, and it's important for the board to know that there was a lot of you know, things, problems to deal with afterwards, but they weren't major. They were relatively minor, but they still were very tight for two. So was his team was very responsive. They did it in a safe and time-efficient manner. And there was a lot of behind-the-scenes work, so to speak, that was going on for days to follow down in the headworks building. So thank you to you and the staff. Not an easy job. It's definitely on one of those, definitely on a TV show.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, wasn't very palatable, but you, but your team got it done like they always do. So, so thank you from us to you.
Thanks, Anthony. You know, the other thing Ralph and I talked about, I mean, we collected an enormous amount of great information that we would have never been able to test for in, in any normal scenario, you know? So we, you know, Ralph and I were on-site for the entire event. Arcadis was here for a period of time too. So we were able to, you know, see things the way you would never see them, you know? Like, we never get to see all six pumps run at 100% speed, see what that looks like, see what the hydraulic implications are of that. So a lot of good came out of this event too, and, and I know we'll be able to make improvements to the facility just based on what we learned. But hopefully it's 25 years before the next one. That would be fun. That's all I have for you folks for this evening. Again, unless anyone has any questions. No questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. Number nine? From staff?
Right. Mr. Chairman, sorry, scrolling over. So just quickly, the report is typical tonight, item 9A, fiscal year 21, regulations expenditures of units report. There's really no, no deviation from around the same time last year. It just shows the prior fiscal year's total balances at the end for 2021, which is obviously our previous year, July 1st, when our, when our entire fiscal year. Copies included. And for discussion on WPCA projects, item 9B, for the collection system. We do have various locations still ongoing for the sanitary sewer lining. Green Mountain Pipeline Services will complete the majority of the san, of the sanitary sewer to replace pipelining work by August 30th. But most notably, we will be beginning sanitary sewer pipelining at the Smith Street area on August 2nd. So the, so Green Mountain will mobilize, they'll start digging their trenches for the temporary bypass. The temporary bypass pumps will be, will be stationed in front of 429, right, the section of Wall Street and Smith Street. They'll, they'll occupy, I believe, one or two parking stalls. But the temporary piping that comes from the temporary bypass pumps, which will be vertical stacks out of the ground basically, with secured with privacy fencing. Those, those temporary bypass pipes will be cut into the asphalt pavement temporarily. Then obviously the contractor will go back and restore. But then they'll be connected to the next downstream manhole. That lining project is a critical project because those few sections of sanitary sewer pipe, which I believe are 36 inches, they are 36-inch RCP reinforced concrete pipe. The first few sections down off of Wall Street, down to Smith Street, we had Jacobs Engineering do a technical, a technical memorandum approximately nine months ago that said that the useful life of those pipes were within the next one to three years. So that's why this, this collection system lining project is very important. We, we want to line it now before there's any failures or collapses with that section of pipe, which is very old, approximately 100 years old. And, and you know, many of you know on, on the board, that once the pipe collapses, you lose your opportunity to align it. Because then, that what you have to do is you have to excavate down and do what's called spot repair to fix the part of the pipe that collapsed, so you can go back up to the service and put the liner through. So it kind of defeats the purpose at that point. We camera inspected the pipe, and right now it is a viable candidate for CIPP lining. The lining, the liner has been ordered. It's, it's a custom, custom fabrication, and there'll be three trucks out there when they're performing the lining. There'll be the truck to, to super cool, super heat the liner, super keep the liner cold, and then to push the liner through. So it's basically a three-truck operation when they actually do the lining. We anticipate it'll take four to six weeks, weather-dependent, but we're very, very confident that we could likely finish, as stated above, that the majority of the lining will be done by August 30th. And that includes the August 2nd Smith Street to replace pipelining. Again, that might go a little bit fast in August, but we, we don't, we'll do everything that we can to avoid that since Labor Day weekend will be fast approaching us at that point. We want to be out of the, we want to be out of the intersection by then. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anthony, I might just add, Mr. Chairman, I know that you, you've asked in the past about Orchard Street. We continue to prepare for that job. The bypass pumping has become the particular challenge on that job. The lining is straightforward, but we had, we have some limitations on, there's an intersection we wanted to interconnect in. It's not going to be available for us to excavate in. And there's some, some challenges with running the line down Orchard Street and Jennings. So we continue to work with the, with the subcontractor on that. And as soon as we get a good plan, we'll let you guys know what the schedule is for that one. Thank you. I'm sorry, Anthony, did, Mr. Carr, did you talk about the 9C?
Mr. Chairman, I did not. No. The, the, is, are there any further questions or any questions at all about the, the sanitary sewer lining? But Smith Street also is important, is an important lining project because as everyone recalls, the head of the harbor, we did require them to install two sanitary sewer manholes in front of their development on Smith Street. And what that's going to allow them to do is that will, when we line our section of pipe, rather than, rather than shutting off the sanitary sewer, sewer service completely, having those two manholes in front of their, two, two buildings, two different buildings on, on the site. They'll much easily now be able to bypass the flows coming from these buildings, so there'll be no interruptions to the sanitary sewer service. So they had to install those two manholes on the head of the harbor site, which they've done several weeks ago. WPCA and DPW accepted the work. So we want to now go in and line because that, that area in Smith Street, the head of the harbor, it's all tied to what's called an ELUR, environmental land use restriction. And basically, it's going to be a combination agreement between deep, between the city, and between head of harbor. And I believe even EverSource is involved because they had a, they had a and uh, between head of harbor. And I believe even EverSource is involved because they had a, they had a, a little skin in the game as well. But basically, we, we don't want to disrupt, disturb what's considered a cap over an area that was a previous, I, I'm watering this down because I don't want to speak on behalf of the water department. But from my engineering perspective and from engineering mind, the asphalt now serves as a cap over what was previously a brownfield site, which is where, or contaminated site, which is where head of harbor is located. So in an effort to not dig up where, where we're taking any soil out or have to do any testing remediation, uh, it was all agreed upon that we can line a pipe. So this is a very critical uh, element for that section of sanitary sewer from Wall Street down to Smith Street, especially since we're on its clock now, uh, as far as when it's uh, anticipated design life, or excuse me, uh, useful life.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any questions at all? Okay.
And I have seen Mr. Chairman, was just the information copies for the uh, our new sanitary sewer uh, extension process, or excuse me, extension policy.
Are there any questions on the information copy that we have in the package? No. Okay, it's um, six twelve PM. And um, that concludes everything except for executive session. I assume that means we have to go to, stop recording, go to another place, and then come back to adjourn. Am I correct that um, the email that we all just got is the one that we should use to go into executive session?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I will start that meeting right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Matt Tadaro. Um, I, I think I was lined up to, to speak during executive session, and I want to note for the group before we switch over to executive session that there were two items on the agenda for executive session. Um, discussion of the NIPD's permit, and then discussion of the sewer appeals. Uh, first to the sewer appeals, one item uh, that was to be discussed was tabled under sewer appeals, and I believe the other, um, a decision was made by the board. Um, so I don't believe there's any further discussion there that's urgent at this point in time, and the NIPD's permit um, discussion is also not urgent. It's an item that we could discuss at a later meeting. So I defer to you as to whether or not we'd like to go to executive session to discuss. But the two items um, the, that I see on the agenda, um, neither of them are, are pressing at this time, so we could likely wait to a later meeting to discuss um, if you so agreed.
Okay, and I'm going to defer to the board. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Removed.
By Mr. Ignary. Anyone in favor? Aye, raise your hand. Okay, so we have uh, Clark and Ignary, and all those opposed. I'm sorry, Terranites is four. Mr. Terranites, you're, you're, okay, four. Okay, so you have Clark, Ignary, and Terranites for going into executive session, opposed to going into executive session, Bovee, Austin Fine, and Mr. Keegan. We have a tie.
But doesn't the chairman have, have the tiebreaker?
Is that how it works? Um, I don't want to stop you guys from doing this. If you want to do it, let's.
Honestly, I, I could wait till next meeting. It was just about those increases, but it, it, like you said, it's not important. I could, Mr. Chair, I defer to you, and I will wait till, till next month's meeting.
I'm going to defer to you guys. I want to do whatever you guys want to do. Let's, let's do it again. Is there a motion to, um, we already had a motion, so ask for a different motion. Is there a motion to table this item? Table executive session.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. No, go ahead, George.
Okay. Terranites got it. All in favor of tabling this item?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, Bovee, Austin Fine, Clark, Ignary, Terranites, Keegan. That's unanimous. Okay. Um, thank you. And um, is, is there any other questions or comments on anything here or not in here? Would you like to ask that, Mr. Keegan? You have something you want to say? Or is he frozen from, for four? You think he's frozen from the last motion? Looks like he's asking to say something.
Thank you. I think that was the vote.
Mr. Ke, so do I. I think it's leftover.
It's leftover from table.
Mr. Ke, Mr. Keegan, are you okay?
I don't think he has a sound on.
I think it's left over from the vote.
I am fine, thank you. But now.
Oh, great.
But now, I'm fine, thank you.
Now we can hear you. Very good. Thank you. Okay, any, any questions, comments about anything here and not on here? No.
But the next meeting is?
Next, next meeting will be Monday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one at five thirty. Um, it calls out the location, but I guess we don't know if we are still going to do Zoom remote meetings. Mr. Carr? I want to put you on the spot, but do you know anything about the governor?
Right now, Mr. Chairman, I know that the uh, this law or the governor's office has, has deferred to the municipality and each individual board agency commission to determine if they want to do hybrid meetings, in-person's allowed. But you can continue with uh, with Zooms and, and or hybrids. And I know that uh, Mr. Manzi, who's on, I know his deployment is working on a, on scenario to set it up for future meetings where people will have the option of doing an in-person meeting and/or being home. So I guess that would be considered a hybrid. So it's still really, it, it sounds like it's at the board's discretion.
Yeah, wait, just, just to give you a background, we're looking to have um, the council chambers, the community room, room two thirty-one and room one oh one at City Hall, all set up to do hybrid meetings. Right now, the only room that's set up to do that is the council chambers. We're working on getting the other rooms set up. It, it, in a, if your meeting's in a month, I'd say it's a possibility. If it's in a week or two, probably not to do hybrid meetings.
In months.
Well, um, you have more than a month. You have till September, mid-September. We're still in mid-July. So it's possible, and I guess we'll wait to hear from you guys. How's that? I mean, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know whether people want to meet in person. I think some people, we talked about this, some people will, will prefer to stay remote, and some people will like to go back to meeting in person. And um, if that's an option, I guess um, we can provide that option in September. And um, the month of August is obviously canceled, right? Because uh, our next meeting is in September. How does that sound to everybody? Is everybody okay with that? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Um, anything else? Anything else that was like that or different?
Uh, this is Larry Manzi again. Just to uh, reiterate, the, the, I've already been in a few meetings, even like tonight's meeting. You wouldn't have a quorum if you didn't have remote access. Um, and it's, it seems to happen more and more, so you know, it'd be nice to go to all, you know, everyone in, in, in the, in the meeting, but I think hybrid meetings are going to be the future. Uh, and it, it certainly does help uh, a lot of these committees where someone is maybe traveling or in their car and they can't be there physically, but you need a quorum, so uh, I've, I've already found a few times that, that uh, by, by doing the remote meetings, we, we wouldn't, a lot of meetings would, wouldn't even have a quorum, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a good thing to keep them hybrid and, and leave the option open. I, I, I believe.
Thank you for that, and um, I guess based on what you just said, we'll really appreciate if you could make that happen for South Smith Street.
Okay, is that where you usually meet?
Yes. We don't, we haven't met in the City Hall for years.
Okay.
So if, if you can make that happen for uh, fifteen South Smith Street.
Well, that's, that's, we're, we're working on City Hall first, then we're going to have police, fire. Um, yeah, so.
Understood how they would take priority. I know a couple guys will go and snag some pizza down uh, South Smith Street, and um, I know some other people might be in Florida, and this allows us to have a quorum. It's been great, so um, I personally agree with you, and I, I hope you could set that up for us so we can have a quorum, and some of the guys can get pizza and camaraderie.
Great, great.
Thank you. Any, anything else? Anybody else, anything?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ignary, motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Bovee, Austin Fine, Clark, Ignary, Terranites. Um, I think we lost uh, Keegan, but um, still the motion carries, so. Thank you very much. Have a good summer.
Have a good night.
Enjoy August.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe Labor Day.
That's right, Labor Day too. Yep.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night, guys. Thank you.